Call the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order, please. If you stand with it, please. I'll lead the prayer. Mike will give you the prayers. Japai with me, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and the blessings and opportunities you give us and the opportunity to serve our fellow man. We pray that our decisions tonight will be fair and just. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that you may show us new ideas and new ways that we may help our county and therefore help our state and help our nation, Heavenly Father. We just pray that you will guide us through these times. And we pray that you will be with us tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a considered republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seated. Come on over, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Gary Farley.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Jeff Phillips.
President.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Vincent Windrow.
Here.
Craig Lynch. We have a quorum.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Codes Department, David.
The Chairman, the Codes Department report for last month is on the table.
Okay. You have the opportunity to look at that and be asked any questions after. We will. Okay. Anything with Ronald the Third?
No.
Reclassification request. Keith Harris, amendment to conditional use permit.
Our first application, the ZV, is located at 9295 Franklin Road. It's approximately 1.35 acres in size. This property was rezoned to services in 2006 with a conditional use permit granted for an in-ground swimming pool business. Since the original CUP was granted, the surrounding area has become increasingly commercial. If you remember, in the past two years, we've seen three applications in this area for rezonings. This aerial is actually a little bit out of date. If you drive by the property now, you'll see that there is a auto shop on one side of the property and a motorcycle shop on the other side that you don't see in the aerial, which are now constructed. So, the applicant is requesting to amend his current conditions of a CUP. He would like to remove the size sign restrictions that are currently on it. He would also like to allow outside storage of materials and equipment for his business. So, I'll just give you a little view of the property. This is actually looking into the property from the road. So, you can see the business is actually located behind the single-family house, which is used for rental purposes on the property. And there's the single-family house. If you can see off to the left corner there, there's actually a brown building. That's the motorcycle shop. It's kind of hard to see through the trees. And then, of course, here's the new auto shop right next door. So, you can see he does have quite a bit of material stored outside on his property, which in his current conditional use permit is not allowed. Here's a closer look of the office and the warehouse. He also has quite a bit of equipment parked in the back. He'd like to kind of open up his conditional use permit to allow that as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anyone have questions for this? Any questions before we open it up to a public hearing? Would the applicant like to speak for it?
The description was fairly well. Did a good job. I just, you know, we've had to change our business plan over the last year, and it does include some landscaping, rock sales, you know, construction of small ornamental fish ponds and such. So, I need the extra storage. We've bought extra equipment, and I'd just like for you guys to approve what we're trying to do.
So, you're trying to get just permission to do pretty much what you're doing now?
Correct.
I mean, just bring what you're doing into compliance?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Are there some current ongoing sign restrictions that are also part of this tonight about being? I thought in my reading that there was something about a sign change that would actually would allow you to go bigger, like some of your neighbors.
Allow a larger sign? If you'll actually look, I'll have to go back a couple of holidays. It would allow essentially what is next door on the auto shops. He actually has an existing sign. It would allow what's right down the street. When his original conditional use permit was granted, it was the first commercial zone in that area, and so they put a size and lighting limitation on the sign that's not actually in the ordinance.
Was there a complaint before you or through the Codes Department or something for what you were doing out of line with this? Or did you just said, hey, this isn't what I'm permitted to do, and you come forth to do all these other things?
No, the Codes Department wrote me a letter and said that you have outside storage of materials and you have two signs. And I guess the two signs were what is called a portable sign. What do you call them?
You have some temporary signs on the site. Temporary signs, you're allowed up to 32 square feet in a commercial area, as long as it is temporary. It has to come down at some point. Can't stay there forever. And then, there was a couple of other signs on the property that Codes were concerned about, but we've looked at them. They're more of directional signs to, because as you saw, the house is in the front and then the office is actually behind it. So, there's some signs that say office this direction. We really consider those incidental and wouldn't count those against the square footage total.
Okay. Anyone else? Rhonda?
I guess the part that I'm most concerned about would be the outside storage. I'm not clear on what you're asking for in terms of how much equipment, how much material is going to be outside.
How much material? If you go back to the rocks, where we're looking at the rocks, I am starting to sell rock. How many pallets are there? There's probably 30 pallets of rock right there right now. I can accommodate and still be able to drive trucks in, probably with 60 to 80 pallets. Everything will be stacked so that we can access them. We're not talking about just stacking stuff up. I'm not talking about stockpiling rocks and, you know, just piles of stuff. That's not what I'm trying to accomplish. Equipment, you know, right now, I own three Bobcats, a backhoe, and a big front loader, four trailers. I think we've got seven trucks. So, you know, how much can I grow? I don't know. You know, I can't really answer how much equipment will actually be there. I don't know.
This question is probably for the planning office. I might be confused. What are they, is he not in compliance with them? All I heard was he had some temporary signs that's not in compliance.
The, I actually included in your packet a letter from the Codes Department. Mostly what he's in violation of is the outside storage of material and equipment. He's limited to only two Bobcats stored on the property, and he's not supposed to have any outside material storage. So, those are the two things he's primarily in violations for.
So, the outside storage and he's allowed two Bobcats, and he's got how many?
On three. And there's also some trailers and...
At any given time, I set Bobcats on jobs. This time of year, I have a lot of equipment sitting on the yard. Summertime, it's almost empty. I'd like for it to be empty right now.
Elizabeth, is there some way, because I want the man to be able to operate his business, but I also want it to be conducive to the neighboring properties as well. And so, just even now, under the recommendations, you've got, we have, you know, from staff, you've got listed no outdoor storage of equipment and material, and that's obviously a need that he has.
That's to be removed. Those from the original conditions. So, that would leave the remaining conditions in place.
So, if we were to remove that, then we have, we're removing any restriction on equipment or material.
That would be correct.
And so, I guess that's the part that I'm not comfortable with is I feel like we're going from one extreme to another, where he's overly restricted, and then we're going to remove it, and it's just completely wide open. So, is there, is there some happy medium we can come to, whether it be with screening or buffering, or just something to make it so that it works for the surrounding community and his business as well?
Sure. And the screening, he is still required to screen per zoning ordinance. You can see on the west side of his property, there is a fairly good tree line existing. And although it's hard to see right now, because it's winter, there actually, he has planted a row of trees. If you look at the other side of the rocks, there's those small trees. So, he has actually planted a row of trees along the east side. There will still need to be a little bit more screening planted at the back corner, which I've discussed with the applicant, and he's willing to do. And that's to screen it from the existing residential house. The green roof house there, that is the only residential house he's right next to at this point. But he will still have to abide by the screening. This won't grant him any relief from that. But if you'd like to put standards on how much outside storage or how many vehicles, then, you know, that is within your power.
If this gentleman is in the pool business like he is, installing and building pools, he's going to have to have some outside storage, correct?
Correct. It's not just swimming pools. We have gone to the ornamental gardens, fish ponds, koi ponds, and that's where the call came in for rock. All right? And I kind of got into the rock business on a fluke. The people around wouldn't sell rock at a fair price to me. So, I just basically told them, there'll be another rock yard in the business, or, you know, in the area. So, I went and bought a couple truckloads of rock, and I'm in the rock business.
The storage of those rock be behind that plank fence, I believe?
Actually, the way that it's shown is all the full pallets are stacked behind the fence. The broken pallets, which people come in and just want 10 rocks, you know, to do a little flower bed or something, that is all on the front side of the fence, and that's how I segregate those two. And at that point, there's probably only, you know, full pallets, three to four full pallets that would be in front, which could back up a little bit.
Can you show the one?
That's inside the fence, full pallets.
Okay. There's some beside the house, I believe, there was.
Correct. Now, those are broken, those are the broken pallets right there that are in front of the fence.
Those probably serve as display units for you, because it's the same thing that are in the back, Ron.
Correct.
Okay. This one right here, that's the one I was talking about. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they're there. I mean, so, I mean...
Is that some problem? Do you have a problem with that? Seems like it's outside this fence.
No. The way he's got it stored, I don't see what he's doing now is problematic. I just want to make sure that it doesn't get out of control. And I understand the need for a business to evolve. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's some boundaries placed on it so that, you know, you don't figure out six months or a year from now, there's some other new business that you need to be in, and it's just, it's not keeping with what we're seeing tonight.
Okay. Mike?
Elizabeth, will you go back to the aerial view, plan view? There we go. In the comments, it says, "Screening will still need to be installed on the northern corner of the property." Will you, will you laser point what the northern part of the property is?
If I had a laser point, I would. The corner I'm talking about, do you see where the yellow vehicle is in the back corner?
In the top right?
Top right, yeah.
Yeah, the back. Oh, okay.
That's where I'm talking about, because the roof to the right, that is the only existing residential property left.
All right. On that blue line, then, on the right side of the page, you see the equally, semi-equally spaced dark circles? Are those trees that he's already planted?
Yes. That's the row of trees I was talking about.
But you're saying in addition to that, you'd like to have some screening mainly for the residents right to the...
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is that okay with you?
We did it last week. Planted Leland Cypruses about this tall on 10-foot centers.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just have one more question. Have we heard from any neighbors? Have you heard any complaints from any neighbors about what it is you're wanting to do there?
No.
Have we at the office?
No calls, to my knowledge.
No calls?
No calls.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for or against?
Ron Williams, I'm the Commissioner from out in there. Answer your question, I've not gotten any calls, and people certainly aren't bashful for calling when they're not happy with something. So, this is a nice little developing area. I don't know if you mentioned that there's a landscape, there's a nursery that's real close by that has a lot of this same type of thing, and I'm happy to see that a guy is sharp enough to see that swimming pools and these things are kind of a go-with thing to do that, and I don't really see a problem with the rocks out there. But I haven't had any calls on it, and I would hope that y'all could support this, and we'd certainly need more business people to try to expand and grow here. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Back to anyone else? Yes, sir?
Second.
Have a motion to approve? Have a second, by Mike. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion to approve. He will be to the court, county court?
The Board of Commissioners, March 11th. March 11th.
Board of Commissioners, March 11th. Ron, tell him he needs to be the Board of Commissioner. Okay. Sheila Smotherman, conditional use permit.
Our next application is located at 1226 Church Street, and is approximately a little under half an acre in size. The property was rezoned to services in 2001 and was granted a conditional use permit for a wedding chapel at the time. Then, the current request is for a gift shop to be located in the property. It'd be open Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is part of the Christiana Buchanan land use study, and this area was shown as a future land use of a neighborhood mixed node. One of the recommended uses within a neighborhood mixed node is specialty shops, so gift shop would fall under that qualification. This is looking into the property as, you know, the existing commercial building and its existing parking. Here, I'm actually standing on the corner of Church and Sugg Street, just to give you a better look at the area. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is this the parcel that the old Christiana Presbyterian Church used to be located on, but the sanctuary part is gone? I remember that. I'd forgotten that. All right. So, this is what used to be the Sunday School rooms back there behind.
Fellowship Hall since...
Yeah.
Anyone else have a question before we open it up to a public hearing? Anyone wish to speak for this?
Yes, I'm Sheila Smotherman, and I'm here to ask permission to operate the gift shop at 1226 Church Street in Christiana. We, we offer handbags, jewelry, candles, jams, jellies, some antique furniture, and a service of custom monogramming. And she mentioned our store hours.
Do you want to have any questions? I think they've been open for a while and just...
Yes.
Thought they were in compliance, according to the auction, I believe, or something. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you. Does anyone wish, anyone else wish to speak? Or is anybody in opposition to this? Anyone else wish to speak?
Joe Jarnigan, I'm a Commissioner out there in that area, and she's got a nice gift shop there and all. I've been in it, and I think it'd be well-received there by the community, and I'd like to see you approve it.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we're going to close the public hearing. Have a motion. Have a motion to approve. Have a second right over here. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Need to be at the county commission meeting. Mr. Jarnigan will tell you there. Dwayne Sanford, amendment to conditional use permit.
Our next application is located at 3615 Shelbyville Highway, and it's approximately 4.3 acres in size. Now, this site has quite a few files behind it. It was originally granted a Type 1 conditional use permit in July of 2006, and that was for a motorcycle shop. Then, in April of 2007, a second conditional use permit was granted for motorcycle sales. Finally, later in the year, in 2007, it was rezoned to services with a conditional use permit for motorcycle service and repairs, farm equipment and trailer sales, welding and fabrication, a single-family residence, automobile sales and service. So, quite a few uses. For simplicity, staff is recommending that with this new conditional use permit, we void and null all the ones previous so that there's only one document listing all the approved uses and all the conditions in one place, just for simplicity. Now, the applicant is requesting a couple of additional uses. He'd like to be able to rent vehicle and equip, vehicle and equipment rental, also retail sales, which he actually has, you know, obviously retail sales along with motorcycle sales. He sells accessories and all that. We just want to clarify it for the ordinance. And also bail bonding, which he does part-time from the property. He would also like to allow vehicle parking along Shelbyville Highway. Now, this is not, of course, customer parking. This is just, he likes to park a couple of vehicles in the front for visibility purposes. If you can see from the aerial, the shop is actually a pretty good distance off the road, and there's a single-family house in front of it. So, he does park his U-Haul trailers in the front currently to basically let people know he's there. That is not allowed by one of his conditional use permits at this time. He'd also like to increase the number of motorcycles and other vehicles that are allowed on the property. He's currently limited to no more than five motorcycles, four cars, and six trailers. He'd like to go ahead and increase the motorcycles to 20 at a time and other vehicles to 20 as well. That's just to kind of open it up a little bit for him. Let's see. Let's let me show you the property. This is actually me standing on the corner of Shelby Pike, looking into the property. So, you can see the single-family house is first, and then the commercial building behind that. And this is what I was talking about earlier with the vehicles parked in the front. You see, he has a couple of trailers there by his sign, and then, of course, Shelby Pike. Now, I'm actually standing in the parking lot of the commercial building, looking back at Shelby Pike. So, you can see he has quite a bit of parking area back here with the shop as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Anyone questions? Yes, ma'am.
Auto auction down the street? We didn't allow parking on the front like that? So, is that going to open up a keg of worms by? Just curious.
It's up to your discretion. The applicant currently uses it that way. He's requesting, I believe he wanted no more than 10, but that is purely up to your discretion. I will say that we have had a call concerned about the parking in the front.
Okay. Anyone else have a question before we open it up to a public hearing? Okay. We'll open it up to a public hearing. Does an applicant wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Elizabeth, while he's passing that out, it appears to me it's well buffered naturally. Is that, is there anything that needs to be done there if we should approve this?
No, he has ample screening for his property. You can barely even see it from the road, just the sign.
My name is Dwayne Sanford. I own Classic Custom Cycles at 3615 Shelbyville Highway. I've been in business 10 years. I used to be over in Twin Oak Drive, and Joshman John Davis is with us, and I had a showroom and motorcycle shop over there, and I built me a new building on 231 South a few years back. And on my application for motorcycle sales, somehow it got confused and then get put on the second one. That's why I went up again, like you said, at my new place. And then, on my application on the third place, I put retail wholesale sales and, let's see, motorcycle sales, service, repair, parts, and accessories, as well as my other request of truck equipment and car selling and farm equipment and trailer sales. I don't necessarily do all this, but somebody wants to trade me a piece of farm equipment on a motorcycle, I got to be able to sell it, or a car. I got to be able to sell it. And I don't plan on filling up my whole front line of my, of my property with vehicles. You know, I'm just asking for 10. Kathy kind of helped me on that, just to put a number out there. You know what I'm saying? But the U-Haul equipment, it's in and out. That's mainly what's going to be out there, because if I park a motorcycle out there, I'm really kind of scared somebody's going to steal it. You never know, you know, with today. But with today's economy, I'm just trying to diversify. The same thing with the bail bonding. I'm just trying to do what it takes to make a living. I mean, I've always had a retail sales showroom, which goes along with motorcycle sales. If you're going to sell motorcycles, you've got to sell parts and accessories and have a showroom to put them in. And that's all I'm asking, is get this approved and be able to do T-shirts and stuff that I want to do and stuff that will sell in my store and make a living, because it's tough right now. And I'm in the recreational business. Why the economy is, I'm doing everything I can to survive, and I'm just trying to make a honest living. And I appreciate y'all's time and consideration. There was a lady from the appraisal department just come by my place the other day and said my place was neat as a pin, County Appraisers Department. I would also like to request outside repairs. I want to do that constantly. There's not going to be a bunch of junk cars sitting on my property. I like, I live there, too. I want to keep the place neat. You know, I don't want to live in a junky place. As far as my parking before, I guess it was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought my parking was for the customers. I just assumed I could park anything I had for sale anywhere I wanted on my property. And I apologize for not knowing that. I had a variance one time for my paving. I went ahead and paved it anyway, which was my parking. So, I went ahead and went the extra mile there. Let's see. There's at least eight known businesses within a mile of my property. Some of them are just like two properties open. So, I'm just trying to make a living, y'all, and I appreciate any help you can give me. I appreciate it very much. I keep my place neat and clean. Doug has approved my buffering and stuff from before, I believe. We went through my buffering and stuff before. It is up to bar. So, like I said, I don't, I don't even do all this stuff. I just want to leave it open if I can. Somebody wants to trade something, man, I can still dispose of it and make a living. And I appreciate y'all's time. If you would look at them pictures, it shows you how I'm parking my front line, my property line behind the state boundary on my property.
Just for information, when those pictures are done, we'll need to keep those for our file.
You can have them.
Okay. Just one question.
I've got extra copies. Any questions? The picture that you can bring up of the front next to the highway?
I put a gate and a fence up there, too.
Okay. Now, how much parking?
There's really not enough.
Well, that's what I'm saying. How much parking is he asking for out front, right where he's got the U-Haul truck? How much, what's he asking for right there?
He would like to set the number at 10.
10 out front.
But once again, it's up to your discretion.
10 is in four cars and six motorcycles or 10 cars or...
I actually, I just want to park a couple of U-Hauls up there.
I see two U-Hauls and a trailer out there right now. I think you've got one white car out there now, don't you?
Yes, I know.
There's nothing out there right now? Okay, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Does an applicant wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Elizabeth Wally's passing it out. It appears to me it's well buffered naturally. Is that, is there anything that needs to be done there if we should approve this?
No, he, he has ample screening for his property. You can barely even see it from the road, just the sign.
My name is Dwayne Sanford. I own Classic Custom Cycles at 3615 Shelbyville Highway. I've been in business 10 years. I used to be over in Twin Oak Drive and Joshman John Davis is with us. And I had a showroom and motorcycle shop over there and I built me a new building on 231 South a few years back. And on my application for motorcycle sales, somehow it got confused and then get put on the second one. That's why I went up again, like you said, at my new place. And then on my application on the third place, I put retail wholesale sales and, let's see, motorcycle sales, service, repair, parts and accessories, as well as my other request of truck equipment and car selling and farm equipment and trailer sales. I don't necessarily do all this, but somebody wants to trade me a piece of farm equipment on a motorcycle, I gotta be able to sell it. Or a car, I gotta be able to sell it. And I don't plan on filling up my whole front line of my, of my, of my property with vehicles. You know, I'm just asking for 10. Kathy kind of helped me on that, just to put a number out there. You know what I'm saying? But the U-Haul equipment, it's in and out. That's mainly what's going to be out there. Because if I park a motorcycle out there, I'm really kind of scared somebody's going to steal it. You never know, you know, with today. But with today's economy, I'm just trying to diversify. The same thing with the bail bonding. I'm just trying to do what it takes to make a living. I mean, I've always had a retail sales showroom, which goes along with motorcycle sales. If you're going to sell motorcycles, you've got to sell parts and accessories and have a showroom to put them in. And that's all I'm asking is get this approved and be able to do T-shirts and stuff that I want to do and stuff that will sell in my store and make a living. Because it's tough right now. And I'm in the recreational business. Why the economy is, I'm doing everything I can to survive and I'm just trying to make a honest living. And I appreciate y'all's time and consideration. There was a lady from the appraisal department just come by my place the other day and said my place was neat as a pin. County appraisal department. I would also like to request outside repairs. I want to do that constantly. There's not going to be a bunch of junk cars sitting on my property. I like, I live there too. I want to keep the place neat. You know, I don't want to live in a junky place. As far as my parking before, I guess it was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought my parking was for the customers. I just assumed I could park anything I had for sale anywhere I wanted on my property. And I apologize for not knowing that. I had a variance one time for my paving. I went ahead and paved it anyway. It was my parking. So I went ahead and went the extra mile there. Let's see, there's at least eight known businesses within a mile of my property. Some of them are just like two properties open. So I'm just trying to make a living, y'all, and I appreciate any help you can give me. I appreciate it very much. I keep my place neat and clean. Doug has approved my buffering and stuff from before, I believe. We went through my, my buffering and stuff before. It is up to par. So, like I said, I don't, I don't even do all this stuff. I just want to leave it open if I can. Somebody wants to trade something, man, I can still dispose of it and make a living. And I appreciate y'all's time. If you would look at them pictures, it shows you how I'm parking my front line, my property line behind the state boundary on my property.
Just for information, when those pictures are done, we'll need to keep those for our file.
You can have them.
Okay, just one question.
Yeah, I've got it. Any questions?
The picture that you can bring up of the front next to the highway.
I put a gate and fence up there too.
Okay. Now, how much parking?
There's really not enough.
Well, that's what I'm saying. How, how much parking is he asking for out front, right where he's got the U-Haul truck? How much, what's he asking for right there?
He would like to set the number at 10.
10 out front.
But once again, it's up to your discretion.
10 is in four cars and six motorcycles or 10 cars or?
Actually, I just want to park a couple of U-Hauls.
I see two U-Hauls and a trailer out there right now. I think you've got one white car out there now, don't you?
Yes, I know.
There's nothing out there right now?
I've been holding parks since I've been in business, really.
Okay.
As far as my business goes.
What, what is he now?
I sold one personally.
How many can he have out there now?
Uh, none currently was what his conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a condition that, that parking must be within the side or rear of the property.
Okay, behind the house.
Right.
My house in front with the, with the code setbacks and stuff, I opened my front door, they were in my shop. So there's no way people know. I've had people come in my, come in my property and say, I didn't even know this was a motorcycle shop or a business bank here. We probably just a big garage. So they can't see what I have, what products I have to sell or to provide to.
Okay, alright.
That's what I'm asking. Um, there's some of them pictures, Mr. Lantz, if you'd like to look at them, it shows my parking and my boundaries where I park behind the sign.
We, uh, we approved a larger building last time or something, wasn't it, when you were up here? A larger building out back?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't there? Is anyone else having, having questions?
Yes. This, the, the vehicles are used for visibility purposes?
Definitely is. I mean, but they're in and out. I mean, I'll rent one and move it out. And another one, it might stay empty and another one come in there. I'm not going to fill it up like that car lot across the street. No.
Elizabeth, is there a, a, an additional sign restriction that he can't put a U-Haul, I have U-Haul trucks for rental on that sign instead of having the actual U-Haul bus itself?
I would say that sign is probably fairly close to being maxed out for what is allowed, 50 square feet. I suppose he could amend it to incorporate. It would, he'd probably have to reduce the sign that's existing to add a U-Haul sign on it at this point.
U-Haul's marketing.
Sure.
They got a program. Actually, my U-Haul rep is here to answer any questions y'all have as well.
I'm sorry, I said.
My U-Haul rep is here to answer any questions you might have as well, too.
Thank you.
Are, are you going to gravel that, pave that, or?
I can't at the moment until the business picks up, but I am going to put some gravel. It is a mix of gravel and dirt right now, but I am going to put some gravel out there.
Gravel? They can't hear you. They can't hear you.
Yes, I am going to put some gravel out front. I am not, I can't currently write this month, but within the next 90 days, I probably will put a couple of loads of gravel out there.
Yeah, you, you can't get on it for the next 90 days now, wet as it is anyways.
The economy right now, sir, I'm just, it's so tight.
Careful, you have a question?
But I mean, I park at 9:00 and 8:00 if you look at the other photos, two of you.
We'll have, have Mike there, please.
I, I got a question. Somebody behind me wanted to ask. 10 vehicles out front, I mean, that, that, I mean, I'll wait, we can discuss this more after the public hearing, but that, that sounds a little high to me, right there on the road. And I just wondered if you could get by with less than 10 items out there, like if you had a motorcycle and two cars and keep it to two or three more U-Hauls or something. I'm thinking five or six, you know, because 10 gets to be a pretty significant number right there on the road.
You just never know, but have you been over the hill?
Yeah, I'd, I'd drive that road.
You know what I'm saying?
And there's some stuff out there we probably wouldn't approve today, you know, with, you know, because it's grandfathered in and all, but not to say anything bad about the neighborhood at all, but, yeah. But we can discuss this more after the public hearing because if nobody else had a problem with it, I can probably live with what it is. But I just thought 10, that's pretty aggressive out there, right there on the road, you know.
But then cars out there if I wanted to anyway, the, my property actually tapers off behind that U-Haul truck. You know what I'm saying?
Mike, do you have a question? No? Either Mike? Okay. Okay. Anyone else have a question? Okay, thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against?
I would like to do some outside repairs as well.
Outside repairs and?
Yeah, but I'm outside my building. Sometimes I might have to work on a U-Haul trailer or something, you know, or truck or something, but I'm not going to file up those junk cars. No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
That's one of his conditions from one of his conditional use permits was no outside repairs.
Hello, ma'am.
I'm Cuba Sherfield Lackage and I own the property right next. There's a small strip in between us. There's a cup. I'm not sure what that is. But my son lives there and I'm against this for the reason of the congestion and the noise and big old tractor trailers and highway department coming off that hill. I think it's a hazard thing. I'll let my son speak. He lives there.
All I'd like to say is that I'm already pretty tired of the noise and stuff, which, where I live, where the building is, well, the other picture, it's right straight in front of that kind. And somehow it, the sound goes to it or something, but I've heard that Harley's so many times, so loud, and I can't hear very well. And I like the sound of a Harley. But after so many of them, you know, being woke up Saturday mornings with it and stuff like that. And where I'm at, it don't seem to bother everybody else as much. I don't know if anybody's ever complained or anything, and I've never complained about it. But it comes to my house. My house is shaped in an L from over there. And if I got a window or a door open, it's revving up in my house when they do that. And when I signed a piece of paper, he asked me years ago, when he first got into this, that he just wanted to put a motorcycle shop there. I didn't even know all this other stuff was there. I know he had the U-Haul trucks sitting out there and stuff for sale, a lot of stuff. But anything that would make, generate more noise for me, I'd like to say no to. And that's all.
Could you point out on the aerial photo up there where your, where your house is and which direction?
It's almost right straight in front of it and about the edge of this tree line.
Right, right, through the trees.
Yeah, I think you can see the corner.
I can see through the woods now and see his lights and stuff where I didn't used to see anything before.
If other signs go up, it may take some of those trees and that would take.
Well, there's land in between. And it's not very wide or whatever, because I can see his lights through it in the winter time, especially in summer. I don't see it so much. But in the winter time, when it thins out and the noise, you know, it can't be over 100 yards away, something like that, if it's that far. You know, and I've just already got enough noise. And I even like Harleys. You know, I like the noise of it. But after a while, it gets old.
Sir?
And I have a small motorcycle shop there. And, you know, I've always told my customers to be quiet when they leave, but he can hardly help it with half the ones he works on are extremely loud.
Sir, aside from the noise factor?
Pardon me?
Aside from the noise, noise factor?
Uh huh.
Do you have an issue with the U-Haul's been in front? Have you had your druthers?
Not big time, no. I mean, it don't look good or great or anything. You know what I mean? It's not, nothing pretty to look at, but it's not ever bothered me enough to where I cussed it or, you know, said I hate that or something. No.
So your opposition is to the sound?
Pardon me?
Your opposition is to the sound. You don't like the sound.
No. And I like the sounds pretty much. And I can't hear very well at all, but, you know, I get tired of hearing these things.
Elizabeth, is this about the sound?
No, he's already approved for motorcycle sales and services that's existing. So this amendment wouldn't really affect that.
Well, it would be more stuff moving around in there if he's going to have trailers rented, you know, and park more of them back there to rent out. People coming in and out with him and the tractor service or whatever, you know, I never even know that. I've heard a few over there, but I didn't know anything about it. When they run one, I hear it. I know it.
Sure.
When he first put it together, for months, I listened to it at 7:00 in the morning. I don't like to get up early.
I think parking would be a hazard on the Shelbyville Highway because a big old truck, it's tractor, trailer, it's come off that hill and, and highway department and people from that block structure. And there's a lot of congestion and traffic at times. It would be hard for it to go in and out. So.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? For or against? Just a minute. Anyone else wish to speak for or against?
Well, I'm speaking for Dwayne. I actually, me and my brother actually own the land in between Dwayne and the people that were just up there. Oh, my name's David Enoch and my brother's Charles Enoch. And we, together, we own the land in between. And me and Dwayne, I mean, I'm a businessman just like he is. I just see, you know, him trying to diversify in this, in this hard economy. And I don't dwell there anymore. I mean, it's just land to me. But I'm just here to speak for Dwayne.
Can you point out, I mean, you're directly south of, of what's out?
I'm directly in the middle of both of them. I'm, I'm, I actually, I actually own the land.
You're in that dark blue, below the light blue and above that dark blue line right there.
Yeah, I'm the trees. There, there's not even.
There's no dwelling there or anything?
No dwelling there now at all. No. I, I mean, we lived there for 20 years, but once the road moved in, we moved out. So, but anyway, I'm just here in support of Dwayne. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Alright. Anyone else for? Okay.
My name is Thelma Gilbert. I'm here in support for Dwayne. I'm a customer and a friend of Dwayne's. I frequent his business quite often. Get my motorcycle worked on just visiting. I don't know about 7:00 AM noises around his business. He doesn't open till 10:00. Of all the times I've been there, you may hear two bikes pull in and out. It's not like there's gangs of motorcycles coming in and out all the time. You get more noise off the 231, the semis and all of this coming by than you do off of his, any of his business. And I've sent customers out that's never been to his facility and they'll pass his business, even with the U-Hauls. One or two sitting out there, he sits so far back, they'll go right by it and call and say, where's he at? I don't see it. So he's not an eyesore. And I don't see how he can be one motorcycle business complaining about another motorcycle business being too noisy. Just, that just doesn't make sense to me. But just here to support Dwayne. Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions?
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello. I'm Bobby Kagan. I'm a Cornwall tool dealer, mobile trucks, like Snap-on Mac, Mack Co. Service all the Murfreesboro area. Been dealing with Dwayne almost five years now. Even at his old location and his new, has one of the nicer shops that I go to, you know, doesn't have junk laying around or anything like that. His place sits so far back off of the road, you know, I can really see the need for having, you know, signage or whatever you want to call it out front. You know, I deal with a lot of shops and there's a lot of them that are nowhere near as well-kept as his place. I just hope that y'all vote in favor of him. Thank you.
And quit you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I think this gentleman was next. Sir?
My name's Mike Hanson. I've, I've known Dwayne forever. I know the way he keeps their shop and he does, doesn't open that early in the morning. He does open 9:30, 10 o'clock. And I really think he needs the recognition out front because he is so far off property. He's talked about it for years. I'd like to see him get it. I hope y'all can help him.
Anyone else?
My name's John Hossara. I work for Walter Hill Plumbing and I've dealt with Dwayne for 10 years from his old shop to his new. And his motorcycle shop is a great benefit for me because I don't have to just use bumpus or go all the way down to Cool Springs or anywhere else with my Harley. But Dwayne's shop is always clean, neat, organized. He doesn't have muffler parts and junk cars. Anybody in this room can go out to his place tonight or tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning, and look at Dwayne's place. And the reason why Dwayne needs to park the U-Hauls out front is because his shop is so well-hidden. And, you know, the one sign out front won't say that, you know, he has the U-Hauls. As far as noise, you're on 2, 231 heading to Shelbyville, noise you're going to have. And that shouldn't stop Dwayne from, you know, moving his business forward because I, you know, I, I need his business just so I don't have to have bumpuses. We need another Harley shop here. And Dwayne's is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Rick Henninger. I've been a member of this community for 24 years. I'm an administrator at MTSU. Dwayne has, I've been a customer of his for 10 years at his previous location and his new location. He is an outstanding mechanic and outstanding businessman. I understand his needs at the moment of trying to diversify his income streams. I think that his petition should be approved. The matter of noise, I can understand the concerns of the previous speaker. Dwayne opens at 10 o'clock for his business and closes at a reasonable hour as well. He's not open all night. He does have a fence that blocks his property from having access in the evenings. And I think that is one of his reasons for requesting this petition to be approved so that he can park the U-Hauls and have a return and drop box, just like a lot of other U-Haul dealers have that ability as well. So thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Ted Rutan and I'm the Rutherford County Supervisor for the State of Tennessee. And I was asked by Dwayne to speak in his behalf. At one time, when he first opened his business, I don't know which department here in Murfreesboro told him where he had to place his sign. Well, anyway, when he had his sign placed, not only Dwayne, but his neighbor, I had to go out and approach both of them and tell them they had both their signs on state right-of-way. And as you look in the pictures, if they're on the way back, I had to go find his highway marker. And in order to do so, his sign had to be put back so far that you have to almost stop and see it. But he has kept his right-of-way mode, even though we have contractors in which mow it. He does not have to mow it, but he does. But like I say, with his sign being so far back, him and his neighbor both, you mostly have to stop because of the right-of-way of the state. So you have to take in consideration that both these gentlemen are trying to make a living. And, you know, I had to enforce the issues, you know, placed upon me from the state. And with him not having no visibility, if he didn't go crazy with the idea of having all kind of junk out front, I don't see any harm in it. The state doesn't have any problem. And I'm not, I'm here because this is the way I met him. It was because of the state. Since I am the county supervisor, I had to approach Dwayne and tell him that his sign was on our property and he had to move it back, which he applied when there, and there was no problem with it. So I hope there's no problem that you all will let him have some kind of, I don't know, with the U-Hauls or something, whatever, you know, that he can be able to have, be able to run his business. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Wayne Schrader. I'm here to support Dwayne. I live in Christiana. I drive by there. I work in Asheville. So I drive by there at least twice a day. It's always neat. As far as the concern about the number of vehicles, I think maybe four is the most obscene out there. Like I say, when he, when he first opened up, I didn't even realize he had the shop back there because of the trees. It's so hidden. And I seen his banner and I had to actually kind of slow down and look to see. It was like, where is the shop? They seem to sign for it. But, and I've had some business dealings with him and every time his shop is neat. and every time his shop is neat, everything's always in order, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Mark Jones. I'm a spokesman for U-Haul, and visibility is very important, of course, to his rental business there. And, and like the other gentleman said, he does have a gate that locks up at night, and needing to park trucks out front is very important for drop-offs and after-hours and stuff. There are very rarely ever be 10 trucks there. I think he's just trying to put that number in case. That does happen at non-seasonal times, wintertime and stuff like that. During the summer, and most of the stuff's going on the road all the time, you're very rarely going to ever see 10 trucks. I know that was a question of the amount of equipment there. But having, needing it out front, visibility is very important. And number two, needing it out there outside the gate for drop-offs after hours. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. With U-Haul, does he have to sign any kind of contract for a number of U-Haul units?
No, sir, he does not. He just want a variety for your customers' convenience, of course.
For advertising purposes, one box trailer, one car hauling trailer, and one truck. Would that not get all, everything?
Yes, but of course, you're going to have the drop-offs at night. And of course, at different times of the year, you will have more equipment than others, depending on the season that it is, you know. A lot, in the wintertime, a lot of stuff sets. You may have more. In the summertime, it's usually moving. That's, I think that's why he put the high number just in case so he wouldn't get in trouble after the fact. It's just going to vary. Your trucks are going in and out all the time.
Okay, but the others could be in the back. What I'm talking about is just for advertising purposes. One of each. Yes?
Our sign regulations that we have don't allow just for vehicles to be parked up at the road for strictly for advertising purposes. Basically, they're being used as a sign. Okay, the sign resolution does prohibit that. Now, in the, this situation where the inventory is constantly moving in and out, you know, that's probably could work. But at the same time, I don't want to get the impression that he can just throw three vehicles out there and just never use them for adverti, they're just for advertising purposes. That's not permitted. And that seems like we've had that discussion when, when we met the last time, and I think that came up, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's just not technically, I mean, it's, it's for the, of course, convenience and visibility for the public, which I guess you could call advertising.
There's examples, you know, that there's a large, well, there's a U-Haul establishment on the corner of Clark and Memorial. Of course, they have a, it's a, it's a U-Haul business, and they have sign. Of course, they have a large inventory of trucks that, some of them, and then they're, they're constantly in and out. Now, each one of those trucks is accounted as a sign. But at the same time, I mean, personally, I'd be more comfortable if they had a sign out front with the U-Haul. And I know that may require a little bit of doing. But again, I just don't want to give the impression that it's okay just to leave three vehicles out front that say U-Haul for advertising purposes, because that's not. But if the vehicles are constantly moving in and out, sometime there may not be any there. If they're being rented, you know, that, then that may not trigger that, but just to be aware.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
There was an earlier allusion to an auto auction issue. Could y'all bring me up to date on what that was? Was it a similar proposal?
The auto auction?
Yes.
Oh, are you guys referring to the West Beverly application that was a couple of miles further down on Chevelle Pike? He was going to have probably upwards of 400 vehicles on the property, and we did want them to be screened from the right-of-way. That was an application we heard almost a year ago at this point.
And, and the similarities?
Well, both on Chevelle Pike, both selling cars. The differences would be that the West Beverly situation was a far more massive number of cars than Mr. Sanford will ever have on his property. However, they were similar that, you know, it was really important that they couldn't be seen from the right-of-way, but that was more of a car storage facility.
Was the auction not a wholesale auction that was not open to the public anyway?
Right, right. But I'm just thinking about the visibility from the right-of-way.
It was online auction, wasn't it, or something?
It was for dealers only.
But there would have been some movement.
Right.
Okay, anyone question? Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Vaughn, and I'm a friend of Dwayne's and hopefully soon, Dwayne a customer too. And if I ever have need to stand before this commission, I hope I have as many friends as you've lined up here tonight to speak for you. This has been good. I want to just say that I, I really recognize Dwayne's business as being a destination type of business. And so, you intend to go there when you're on your way there. If you're needing something done, if you want to buy a motorcycle, it's not so much a impulse type of business. But it is with the, the bringing on U-Haul, that is something that he's needing. I can see and recognize the need to have people recognize that he has U-Haul products there. I drop in on Dwayne periodically, always unannounced, and it is his shop, his yard, both in front of his house, in front of the shop, and all around is always, always neat and tidy. And I just want to speak to that on his behalf. Also, I know as far as his hours are concerned, you know, you probably noticed the gate that closes, and he closes that gate when he's closed, and that's when his business is, is shut down. That's at 6 o'clock, and, and he, he's pretty tidy with that kind of stuff. So, I just hope you all approve for him.
Anyone else?
Joe Jarnigan, I'm the county commissioner out in that area. I want to get cleared up myself right here before I start. From my understanding, his motorcycle business, none of that, not in question, is.
That's correct. The motorcycle business is already approved.
Ain't really all we up here to talk about is what he's going to park vehicles in front or not.
That and a couple of other additional uses, bail bonding, vehicle equipment rental, and, and retail sales, which, which already is implied by some of his other uses.
Okay, because I want, I want to make sure that we get covered what needs to be covered where this man ain't got to be every time he turns around planting in him or somebody out there. As far as the storage of the vehicles out front, in my personal opinion, I don't, I don't think he ought to have over more than eight out there myself. Total, I think he can get by with that. And that way there, everybody know where they at up front. You know, sometimes he may have a couple of trailers out there. He may have a couple of motorcycles. And sometimes he may just have U-Hauls. And the other two items, what was they?
There's the, the actual approval for the vehicle and equipment rental, the U-Hauls, the bail bonding, and also the number of vehicles from a limit of five motorcycles to 20 and other vehicles to 20 as well.
Okay. I, I hadn't had no cause against this. This gentleman and lady was here tonight was the first complaint that somebody voiced to me, and I understand what he's talking about there on the noise. Of course, the motorcycle business is already approved. What he's asking for on these other three, like I said, I recommend approve them. And like I said, I think he can get by with eight myself.
Questions? Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to approve some type of temporary? Yeah, temporary permit for, yes, some kind of variance, thank you, Mike, to, for he, so he can run that U-Haul business without the proper parking according to our ordinance and, and see how that business goes, and then comes back and, and. I'm not real sure that, that if the U-Haul business works for years and years and years, that it's a good idea not to have pavement or gravel or something out there for him to park on. And it's just a concern that I've got, but I don't want, don't want to stop him. But I'm thinking, I remember sometimes in the past that we've said, "Do this for a year or so," or whatever, and then come back and let's see if the business is picked up and you're doing good enough. Then you'll have to meet our ordinances and regulations by putting gravel down. Is that possible?
Mr. Phillips, I do think, I mean, you're correct. There have been times in the past where you've granted approval for a temporary duration for, say, six months to a year, just to see how things operate. As far as the, I think you're referring just to the storage out front. That's what you're referring to. Okay. I mean, I wouldn't be adverse to that. I would be a little hesitant to just have him throw gravel down just because, when if it's done right, it looks okay. But a lot of times, they just, some people may just throw down some gravel, and it gets kind of messy and gets all over everything, really. I'd almost rather see some, some paving. Quite frankly, that's what the ordinance would require anyway for any kind of permanent-type parking. But if that's what your desire is, I mean, you could approve the application just subject to this one part being revisited in six months or a year or something like that.
What was the staff's recommendation as it relates to the, the parking area where those U-Hauls are right now? Was there a staff recommendation?
There really wasn't a staff recommendation per se. I, I will reiterate that one of the concerns I had about it was them being used for sign purposes. You know, it's one thing if, if it's out front, and it comes and goes fairly often. But to keep them out front permanently, they're, they're basically operating as another sign is what they're doing. And the resolution clearly is, or clearly does not allow that. So, that was the, the biggest concern I had regarding that, so.
And grant him the ability to park out there, and that becomes an approved parking area, will he not have to pave it anyway unless he goes and gets a variance?
He would have to.
So, so we don't necessarily have to say pave it because if we approve it, he's got to pave it. Unless he goes to BZA and gets a variance.
Right.
Is that not so?
Now, he had, I'm sorry, I was going to say, he, in the past, had gotten a variance from some of the parking requirements, and I believe that for, it was for gravel. So, of course, now this, I don't think this part of it was really foreseen at the time, the, the parking in the front. But variances run for the whole property, not just for one little part.
Is the applicant requesting the ability to park 10 U-Hauls out there or 10 of a mix?
Just, it'd be a mix, as, as I understand it.
Can we dictate what the mix is if we should decide to approve this? I mean, we could say two, yeah, two U-Hauls, two, or some combination of four U-Hauls and four-wheel vehicles, and the rest, six motorcycles. We could do that.
I mean, you could do that, yes. I mean, if you really want to get that technical with it, I guess, what I would probably recommend is maybe just limit the number of U-Hauls out front, just because, again, for the, for the sign issues that I was concerned about. And, you know, the only issue with, with being so specific with the rest of the vehicles is that puts codes in kind of an awkward position, having to go out. If he happens to have one more ATV, then he has a motorcycle, then they have to send a letter out. I mean, that, that seems a little, you know, ridiculous to me. But anyway, that's my thought on it.
Mike, I understand what you're saying on that, but I think in the long run, if we start dictating two U-Hauls, two motorcycles, two cars, one truck, or whatever, I think we may get into a situation where neighbors call, they say three U-Hauls over there and, you know, be running David's inspectors, you know, ripping and running. And if we just call it eight vehicles, whether it be motorcycles, U-Hauls, cars, trucks, or whatever, I think that may suffice.
Okay, Vincent Gibson. Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak for, against? Do you have something else? When he gets through? Okay. Got time for two more then. Middle work. Use that mic right there as good as you can.
I agree with Mr. Farley, because I mean, you know, you're going to make things more, it's like we're same shape we're in now, you know? But I got a variance before I got it paved. I spent $14,000 over the paving. And if I gravel, I'm going to gravel it nice, and I assure you, I'll have it gravel within three months. I assure you. Within three months, if not, if that long. Maybe not even that long. But my business should pick up in the next month because it is more a motorcycle business. But I will gravel it. I will gravel it and compact it. That's what I did before. The other part that I've got gravelled. But I did pave more than what I was supposed to before just to, just to get my place looking neat, you know? Nobody wants to ride a motorcycle up on gravel. I mean, don't somebody get hurt? But I will make my place look neat. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I've got a comment. I've dealt with Mr. Sanford many years ago when he lived in Midland Foster. Flood issues. I've dealt with him when he had his shop over on Twin Oak Drive. And if, if he tells you something, that he's going to do something, I think he's a man of his word. He's always followed through everything he's ever told me. So, if he says in three months he'll have it gravelled and compacted, it'll be gravelled and compacted.
I really thank you.
Anyone else have, anyone comments? Anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jarnigan, did you want to say anything?
Really what Mr. Farley said there is what I was going to say. And I, I think we just leave, leave that the eight mixture, that's what he says he can get by with. And I'd hope this committee here would go ahead and approve it like it, with gravel and a compact and go from there. If it don't, we need it when it gets commissioned.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. I'll get back. Comments, motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Farley?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request with the total amount of vehicles to be eight parked out on the front, and everything else that he's asked for to be approved.
All right. Do I have a second? Mr. Phillips, second.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
He mentioned earlier he wanted to be able to repair vehicles outside. Are we addressing that?
I talked to, to Mr. Sanford about that a little earlier. Now, I think what he, what he was talking about was the ability, if someone brings in a trailer and it's just a quick fix, it's going to take all about two or three minutes to do, like a wire needs to be changed out or something like that. Something like that he might do outside, you know, any other kind of major repairs, anything would be inside. I don't really have any particular issue with something like that. Now, Dwayne looks like he's raising his hand for some reason, but that'd be up to you if you wanted to hear back from him. But as I understand it, those kind of small, small repairs that don't make a mess, take very little time, you know, quite frankly, we're not going to be in a position to be out there to see him doing it anyway. Now, if it comes to a situation where there's parts laying everywhere and that kind of thing, those are the kind of repairs that, in my mind at least, need to be inside.
You don't want, you don't want Sam pulling an engine out of a truck in the parking lot or something like that.
I just wanted to be clear on what we're saying in eight vehicles also, because, you know, U-Haul's got car haulers, they've got box trailers and stuff like that. We're talking vehicles as motorized vehicles, so he's going to be allowed eight of those out there, correct? And then the trailers and the car haulers and stuff like that is, is basically whatever he wanted to have. But, or is there a limitation on?
I would think to be units. I think a trailer would count.
Eight items.
Eight items.
Eight items, yeah, eight pieces.
A truck and a trailer, two.
I change it just a little bit, because we says no more, I will say eight. Now, it says motorcycles and/or vehicles. I mean, we could put more than eight vehicles or pieces of equipment. That way, we catch everything.
Well, I just wanted to be perfectly clear in the motion and what we approve. So, he's clear, applicant's clear, building the codes is clear, and what we've approved is clear. So, you're talking eight items.
Eight items.
Whether it be a trailer or a motorized vehicle or.
Motorcycle.
Motorcycle, or whatever.
Come, come on back up here, we need to, we need to hear that.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules, let him come back up.
Okay. On front of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Yes, sir, come on. Just, go ahead, go ahead, just tell us what you want to do.
If I do work on a vehicle outside, it won't be two or three days, and I'll be back in. There's not going to be a junk motor sitting out in my parking lot, there's not going to be nothing like it. Everybody here is verified, I keep my place neat and clean, and it will be.
Well, really, these eight pieces is like out front for sale or rental, is what I understand. This other stuff you're working on and everything, that's back in the back, we're talking about out front, eight pieces.
Yeah, I'm just making some clarification.
Okay, we're good on that.
I'm not happy with that.
No, I was talking about, he had mentioned that he wanted to be able to repair vehicles outside, and if that's not allowed now, I just wanted to clean that up while we were here. And so, so I didn't know if that was included in Gary's motion, or would include it, or, or, and I don't know how far we need to go without advertising that change. I don't know if we just go up here without advertising that much of a change and start making wholesale, because I, I don't see that as being a big change, personally, but.
What he's referring to is one of his conditional use permits, had that on, all repair work must be done inside shop, is carried off of this, I try to keep to the condition it's staying. And that's the condition he's referring to, that is just a condition of the permit, we wouldn't have to re-advertise that, if you wanted to amend that in some way.
Is that, is that in your motion?
Sorry.
Put that in your motion? Length of time that he can work on something outside?
The time he can work on, on vehicles outside?
Outside, is that what you want, right? Length of time, or?
The applicant is.
Or take that off completely.
Sorry.
I wouldn't, maybe minor repairs outside.
Minor repairs outside?
What, given what, like a three-day maximum that it could be out there being worked on, is that what you're talking about, Doug?
Well, not necessarily, well, I think what I'm saying is, you know, the condition it's worded right now, it says no outside storage of, no, I'm sorry, all repair work must be done inside the shop. Okay, maybe change that to say all major repair work, or, you know, something to, to that effect, possibly, or like, maybe only minor repair, only minor repairs can be done outside, something like that.
If I want to pull a transmission out of a car, probably, and push it outside, get it fixed, and push it back in, and put it back, transmission back inside.
So, so the major work would be done inside?
Yeah, but I still want the ability of a U-Haul trailer, truck needs some wiring real quick, like he says, who's out there fixing? Like I said, spark plug.
And those kind of little repairs like that, I don't really.
Yeah, that's fine, well, just add that into the motion then, that's, that's fine.
So what was, what, how are you going to, or that, so we make sure we get it right?
That any major repairs should be done on the inside of the facility.
I do welding and fabrication, welding repairs too.
Outside?
Yeah, sometimes. But it's minor, I mean, I have a day today.
But that, to me, that's not, I'm talking about pulling engines.
Right, right.
You know, I'm talking about major, I'm talking.
I just want to make sure everything is clear of everything, so I don't have to keep coming up here, like we're talking about, guys.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, go. Motion?
Go second. Okay, call or roll.
Rhonda Allen?
Aye.
Richie, I'm sorry. Veronica Buchanan?
No.
Gary Farley?
Yes.
Will Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
Steve Sandlin?
Aye.
Mike Bott?
Yes.
Vincent Windrow?
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, you'll need to be at the county commission meeting, Mr. Jarnigan will tell you about. Landscaping regulations.
Really?
I hear a motion, too, Sean. Okay, let's.
Well, I can speed this up, if you would like. All right.
They came on motorcycles, eh?
Landscaping regulations, I was going to give you a brief overview of everything, but we have been talking about them for going on almost a year at this point. But they are before you, so if you want me to skip the, the brief overview, I'll be happy to just answer any questions if you prefer. Or I can give you an overview. Any preference?
Elizabeth, and Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
We have visited this multiple times, and we have the latest revisions to the landscaping plan that were discussed at our 1:00 meeting in the mezzanine a few weeks ago. And it appears there have been no changes to those.
Correct.
Since then. And as I'm sure we all have, I have read those previous to this meeting, and find no reason not to make a motion to accept.
We need to have a public hearing on them first.
Oh, great.
So just, just hold off for just a second.
Okay, Elizabeth, are you, your presentation through?
Uh, yes, thank you.
If I can make just, just a brief comment about that, along with the landscaping requirements, I want to make sure that we've made several other amendments to the resolution that, that don't go unnoticed, because we'll have to advertise these separately. You'll notice, and these are the last two or three pages of your, well, three or four pages of your packets, and they were presented last time. Just your motion, make sure that it, that it includes those as well, because the, you know, the, the planning commission needs to act on these amendments as well. Yes, yes, right, starting at Article Two definitions, those are just some related changes that would need to be made along with this.
Okay, do you, do you have any other, other comments before we open it up to public hearing? Nobody?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, we'll, we'll open it up to a public hearing, is anyone wish to speak on this? For, against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, Mike?
Like I said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve with the addition of the single-page provision that was handed out tonight on existing language and proposed language.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a second? Okay, on front of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Steve?
Steve.
Okay, members of accessory structure regulation?
Yeah, that.
I've got that one, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals considers applications from time to time on allowing accessory structures such as garages and storage sheds, those kind of things, prior to the establishment of a principal use on the property. They're handled as conditional use permits, however, there aren't any guidelines for their approval or review, except for the standards of general applicability that are found in our zoning resolution. This does have the potential to open the door for possible inconsistencies with enforcement. There are also some situations where conditions on a piece of property may make the establishment of a principal use or a principal structure either impractical financially, or impossible, such as no soils area on the property, or something to that effect. So what we're proposing to do is to change the current wording of our resolution, and you have that before you on your table today. It starts off, it says existing language under Section 13.04 E2. Right now, it says no structure, accessory structure you shall be constructed or established on a lot prior to the time of substantial completion of a, or construction of a principal structure to which it's accessory. What we're proposing to do is add a little to that. Under the proposed language, which you'll see, number two stays the same, however, number three, we do, we are going to allow for a non-commercial storage facility, workshop, or other structure for the private use of a landowner, which can be constructed on any residentially-zoned land, prior to the establishment of a principal structure with a Type II conditional use permit granted by the BZA. And we actually have some conditions listed there under number three, basically the size have to meet the size limitations, the structure meet all the setback height and lot regulations, lot coverage regulations, only one structure permitted, and then some, some items there that the structure cannot be used for living quarters, commercial activities, those kind of things. And of course, we put the, the, kind of our disclaimer, if you will, about that this doesn't prohibit anything allowed to be used in conjunction with an agricultural use. Along with that, we've added, we're proposing to add Section 703, which is a new provision, and this is to deal with those situations where this is more of a, of a permanent use. Those situations where it's not feasible to put, like, a, a single-family home on the property. You'll notice the conditions are pretty much the same, there are a few more. Basically, A, just says that they're considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Type II conditional use, property must be residentially-zoned, the owner of the property has to provide us proof, verifiable proof, that the conditions on the property would not allow the establishment of a principal structure, and the property would have to be at least five acres in size, and then the, the last, on H, we would prohibit any outdoor storage of materials or vehicles. This is the same set of regulations that we did provide you at the last day meeting in January, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we've discussed all the, yes, ma'am?
Since we don't have the rest of the ordinance here, where it talks about the size of the accessory structure, what is the size if you're not comparing it to a primary structure? Because I know typically those two are linked together, how do you determine the size when there's not one?
You're allowed 1,200 square feet of detached accessory space, between one and five acres, you're allowed 1,800 square feet, and anything above five acres, you're allowed 2,500 square feet. But that 2,500 does not include agricultural structures, that simply is garages, carports, we don't consider ag buildings in that total.
I did have one more question, that, that answered that question, but I did have one more. I know sometimes when people buy a piece of property, they might build their barn and live there, or try to, you know, create some sort of structure to live there while they're building their house. Is that what, is that part of what we're trying to prevent here?
No, I don't think so. No, that, actually, that situation you're referring to, that if they're building something to live in while they're building a larger house, that smaller unit really becomes kind of their principal structure for the time. Then when they build their principal structure, of course, now, depending if they want to keep it, they may have to get a approval for an accessory dwelling unit. They may just turn it into, they may, it may be living space, but they may take the kitchen out, it may not be like a second dwelling unit at that point. It could just be like a, a second, like a playroom, or something like that.
They're going to, RS15 regular subdivision lot, what size structure, secondary structure can be put on that?
For, for a detached accessory?
Yes.
Under, like, just a typical R15 lot, 15,000 square feet, they'd be allowed 1,200 square feet of detached accessory space, total. That could be two or three structures, that could be one big structure, but that's all they're allowed.
So if they had a home, say, say they had a 1,500-square-foot home?
Mm-hmm.
How much can they have?
They're still allowed 1,200.
1,200.
It's, yeah, it's not, it's not dependent on the size of the house, the, the size of the accessory structure, they're allowed 1,200 square feet of detached accessory space.
All right, by doing that, are, are, can we get into where we may have two residents on one lot?
Well, we have regulations that, that deal with that. As far as, you, you'll recall, last year, we plat, we passed some amendments to our accessory dwelling units. Depending on what they're wanting to build and the size, typically, if it's under an acre, I think it has to go to the BZA, if I recall the regulations right. So I guess to answer to your question, they couldn't just build one and start living in it, not, not, not with a, just an R15 lot.
So we've got regulations in place that we want to have two houses, or two residents on this regular.
On a regular subdivision lot, as you're referring to, that is correct. And this, this would not change that, this wouldn't change that.
What else? Questions? Public hearing, we opened up to a public hearing, anyone wish to speak for or against? We'll close the public hearing, Jeff, Jeff knows how to clear a courtroom. Okay, do you have a motion? Motion? On front of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Yeah, David? Anybody? Hear a motion? Motion to adjourn, I have a second, second right here, Mike.